March eighth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to the pledge of allegiance and the prayer. Brother Ryan Snow from Pioneer Free Will Baptist Church will lead us in vote.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should you bag your heads with me? Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we want to thank you, God, for your grace and your mercy that you so freely give. Pray, Lord, that you just be in the midst of this meeting. God give wisdom where it's due. Pray, God, that you give understanding. We ask, Lord, also, that you bless this school. Pray, God, that you watch over each child that comes every single day, the transportation. God, just the teachers that take a stand every day to teach our children. Pray, God, that you just be with the administration also, God, to lead this school in the direction that it should go. God, that you'd show it favor. Be with each athlete, each academic student, and who, just all, all choices, Lord, that would, that would come here. Lord, that you'd watch over and bless them. The Lord we just ask tonight, as we come here to do the business of this meeting, pray, God, that you be in each part of it. The Lord we ask these things, the precious name. Amen.
Do you want to say it for me too, or do you want to ask that? Thank you so very much.
You got all the input I'm gonna get.
They're the best. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, this time we move on to the approval of minutes from the February eighth, twenty twenty one meeting.
Any changes?
No.
Take much of approval now. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to approve the minutes from the February eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
It's time we move on to the approval of encumbrances and change orders.
Okay, first of all, we have, in general fund, you'll notice there at the top, just, we have a shipment, a truckload of paper that come in that we've ordered, and that was just about ninety-nine hundred dollars. We have P O three twenty-one, that's A C T, that's for our A C T aspire for the eighth grade. A thousand dollars encumbered for that. We approved last month those two hundred Chromebooks to replace the ones that were on back order from C D W that we canceled that order. This encumbrance is to S T S education for two hundred Chromebooks. Three hundred, three twenty-five is lodging for this summer's COSA conference for administrators.
You may have already answered this before, but on the Chromebooks, who all gets those?
Who all has, who, every student. We're one to one.
kindergarten through high school, okay.
When we get, when we get this group in, now, if we, we've, I'm sure, had some broke this year and disrepair, but when we came into the year with this two hundred, we were gonna have about seventeen hundred in the district.
Okay.
So we have a few extras. Well, no, it's probably.
Yeah, and then teachers have, some teachers have classroom sets and different things, but that's about the number throughout the district at this point.
Okay.
Then we go down to three twenty-nine. We encumbered the amount, we've talked about, that we've contracted with Barlow and Associates to write the grant for the Twenty-First Century After-School Program, and that's that cost for that. P O three twenty-nine for two thousand dollars. But we're talking about a potential of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. Three thirty is HeartSmart Technology. That's encumbrance for our defibrillators and batteries to, to replace the batteries and the defibrillators that we have at sites right now. And that's, we encumbered forty-five hundred dollars. Three thirty-three is the gravel, the second load of gravel. After our initial gravel had time to settle, we come in with another layer of gravel over here at the creek gate. And then three thirty-four, united turf and tract. That's for our athletic fields to do all the pre-emergent for the, the spring, kill out the weeds for the season. Three thirty-five, coal plumbing. We did an additional, this is somewhat of a blanket. We have him a bid to come in during spring break. When we did the backstop at the baseball field last year, the, the French drain was damaged that was in there. So really what we have is a retaining wall. Water, we need to fix draining there. So we're gonna come in and put a French drain around the perimeter, inside perimeter of that backstop with, started this dugout and go all the way around to the other dugout and put drains in there and then take that water on out that knoll on, on the other side of the visitor's dugout. He's gonna take care of that, and we've started using him from time to time, so we just did a blanket.
Where's he from?
That's Garrett Cole. That's McKenzie, Maxwell McKenzie Cole's husband.
Is he from here in Stigler?
No, he's originally from Seminole, and they married and moved back here.
Business, is he?
Oh, yes, uh-huh, yeah, he started a plumbing business here.
How many loads of rock was that on that limestone minerals? How many?
Now, I totaled, this time I, it was four or five for it? Yeah, because, um, oaky drilling spread it for us. That's why I looked.
Good.
Because I thought Susie might know.
We hauled it and spread it.
They donated that part of it.
Yep, oh, that was donated.
Correct, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
The second page, we have some encumbrances for, this is reasons, separate pages. This is for payroll. If you look, first, we had some travel reimbursement. These are travels, day travel, they're not per diem travel. So these have to go through payroll. So we had some small reimbursements there. And then on down, seven oh two thirty-nine, that's Wesley Cloud. The athletic boosters contract with him to be the director of booster boosters in the winter. And they pay him, for that whole season, they paid two thousand dollars. So that two thousand one hundred and fifty-three is with fixed costs because, of course, if he's a school employee, has to go through payroll. And then we have two National Board certified teachers. These are our speech pathologists, Teresa Lackey and Katie Dobie. And then that is the cost of that National Board certification. Third page, we have some change orders. If you look up in the top right, you'll see change order report. These are pretty basic, but we have some, we need, because we've used a lot of substitutes this year. You can imagine with the virus and everything going on, so we need to add some additional money to those P Os. So we just, instead of creating a new P O for grade school substitutes, we're just adding to the original P O. And then you go on down. That seventy-sixty extra duty certified, that's for high school certified extra duty for the second half. And so those are all change orders for this month. And then the fourth page is, if you look, that's child nutrition. We just had two, P O twenty-five and twenty-six, to Quill for ink and then Benny Keith for boot supplies.
Make much of approval now.
I'll say.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to approve the encumbrances and change orders as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Move on this time to other financial reports.
Okay. I'm just gonna step up here because our pointer, our pointer will work on the wall, but it won't work on this screen, so I just will use my old-fashioned pointer here. So if we kind of looked at these last months, these are the main, on the bottom line, these are our, our balances for these different accounts. We were talking about the different accounts earlier. So general fund, we end the month with two million eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Our building fund? Nine hundred and six, I agree, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We're looking at, we've gotten the most of our money in from revenue for building fund, and we're gonna be right there at that, and we're trying to protect that for capital expenditures a little later. Then child nutrition, you come right over here, our balance at the end of the month, hundred and seven, hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then sinking fund is money left over from a judgment that's just been sitting there. And then gifts, this is fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. This is some miscellaneous accounts that we have that have for scholarships and different things like that. So if we move on, gave you kind of the printout. This is just kind of the overview of our finance, what we've spent so far this year and this month. If you'll look, regular salary, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, extra, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. This overtime and things like that, bus driving, for a total this month on salaries of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. We compared this year to two thousand eighteen, nineteen because last year's fiscal budget was somewhat of an anomaly. So if we compare it to eighteen nineteen, you see six ninety-three. This time in that year, we, we spent seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we're in the good this month compared to that, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So so far this year, we're in the good this year for ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So that's, what we tried to do is we come in was to absorb some salary, and it's, it's showing itself starting to now. February bills, everything outside of salary. This month, our bills were fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars as compared to in eighteen nineteen, February, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. We're in the good, fourteen thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. So so far, we're bringing this down. We're, we're in the good this in salaries because of our grants early in the year. We're still behind a little bit, but we're catching up. So we're, we've spent hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars more right now this year than we did in eighteen nineteen, but you can kind of see that that tide has turned as we talked about last month. Then this is child nutrition expenditures, and we'll just briefly, we talked about this last month. Our expenditures after February are at one oh three, three twenty-four for the year. Our revenues are at one thirty-eight, sixty-seven, and I had that, that's about thirty-something thousand that we're in the good there, and that's plus, you know, as we've talked about all, all through the year, moving some child nutrition, moving more salary over in child nutrition since we've had a bump in, in revenue. So we can see it's, it's quite a bump that we've had this year over last year. So we're kind of proud of where we are right there also.
These, these don't, they don't reflect the stimulus, the one-point-three million that we're anticipating?
No, 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 because we'll do that on a, on a claim basis. So we'll, basically, you spend the money and then claim it.
Is it a done deal, is it already approved and it's, it's guaranteed, I guess, is what I?
Now, the, like we talked about last board meeting, the one-point-four-nine?
Yes.
Is a done deal.
Okay, okay.
We have access to it now. And then you're looking at, at another one, so, but that's not a done deal. I mean, it's closed, but.
They were looking at those stimulus as giving us options to be able to use them for facility? Did they ever come up with that?
Well, I'm still kind of, because that's a sticky substance.
So a lot of it's for payroll, wasn't it? But then they brought in some other things on top of that, I thought.
Yeah.
Something about it.
You've got a, you've got a list of different categories you can use it for. You can use to, surplanting was a bad word, but you can use it to surplant salaries. Or what we did with the, the first CARES Act money, the three hundred and fifty-three, what we're finishing it out with is going back and paying our utilities this year, and then we'll pay our, oh, I'm gonna say probably two-thirds of that big insurance bill in June. We'll pay with whatever's left of that to finish that out this year.
And the stimulus funds, I assume it's a, you got so much time to use it or you lose it?
Right, the one that we're using up this year, it, you had to use it by September twenty-two. The most, the one, the one-point-four-nine, I believe is twenty-three, but it's my understanding this latest one could be as late as twenty-eight.
So we got time.
I'm gonna be old. But that's other financial.
Okay, everybody good, no questions, comments? Okay, this time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point during our meeting. A comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R, no one present for that. Information items, A superintendent's reports.
Okay, as we have, I guess, the whole year, kind of keeping you guys up to date, and I'm glad we have, because you can kind of see it this month on COVID numbers within the school. This month, we've been waiting on, not, these are all, but grade school, we have three students quarantined. And in the middle school and high school each, we have one. And out of those five, three of those are out of the same family. And then those three and one more show four are due back tomorrow. So I haven't checked today, but I'm crossing my fingers that by tomorrow, we'll have one.
And those aren't positive, but they're just quarantined?
Those are quarantined, yes. As the weekend, we didn't have any isolated or anything. So that's very good news, so we're proud of that. Yes, man. So the next thing, and I found out in a webinar that it's probably good that as many amended calendars as we've had to do this year, that, sorry, Brett.
That's okay.
We don't have to have that as an action topic. And the reason is, we are supposed to upload an amended calendar when we have an outage within seventy-two hours. So that's what we thought of the question. And they said, no, you don't have to have that. Go before the board before you send it up. So we just have to have myself and the board president to sign off, and then we go ahead and upload it. So this calendar is the same, except, as you know, what we did, we, we were in school on the eighth of February. We let out on the ninth, this is pretty significant, when we went home from the last board meeting and it hit. And so we were out the remainder of that week. We were supposed to be out on the fifteenth and then the sixteenth through the nineteenth. We did virtual days on these, I'm gonna say those are blue, green, whatever they are, Kenny. I have kind of colorblind. So these six days were virtual days, and then these last two, we felt like we had these days down here, the sixteenth and the twenty-third in April. So if we could take some of that and be in school, that's what we thought was best and the wisest decision. Also, this day right here, the twelfth of March, right, well, this Friday, man, it's here. So the twelfth was to be a virtual slash professional day. We were gonna have some professional development, but we feel like at this point in time, that would be better served to be a traditional school day. So that's the reason, these are actual what we use to call snow days. And then we got three back out of it. So we'll be in school here on the twelfth of March, and then we'll be in school on the sixteenth and the twenty-third of April. We still have one later. So that's the amended calendar.
Are you going back or you? I'm waiting.
Went too far. I think that's the last time. Okay, and then I just wanted to just say this. Coming home, I'm gonna say is, well, it was one of those days, the eighteenth maybe. And from Podo, and Mr. Pemberton calls me on the phone about eight o'clock at night, and he says, hey, we've got a water problem. And so they, the city's told us that we're losing about eight hundred gallons an hour. So we gotta find it. And it's at night, who are you gonna get to work on it at night? Well, we were able, number one, to get a hold of Mr. Cole, and he came down. But, so we're at T's off of H Street and comes up through that middle school grounds there, and that services the whole middle school and high school. By the time I got up here, we, they were looking for, couldn't find water on the ground, so called the city, Jimmy Hayes and his group, and we thought, well, we'll turn the water off tonight, tomorrow morning, come in, turn it on, have school, try to get someone in on the weekend. And he said, no, he said, we'll be, give us about an hour, we'll be up there. And so those guys, about a crew of five of them, come up within an hour, had that leak found, had it fixed, and we all went home about one fifteen, one thirty Friday morning. So I'm proud of, you know, those guys get overlooked sometimes, the, that work for the city. And that's, that was on school grounds, and they took, and they called Bobby. Bobby okayed it, here they come. So that crew along with our, we had our maintenance and custodial staff here, I thought did an exceptional job that night.
We're on the streets, you were up here in your coveralls and mud boots too.
You know what? I had, when I got home and looked real good, I had a little piece of dirt right here.
We had shovel, maybe.
I was, I always saw him leaning on that shovel.
That's what it was for, the dirt on the top of the shovel.
Yeah, a little piece of dirt on the top of that shovel. So there to be commended, I was proud to be here that night. And then we just have a quick little video. Oh, I, you, we were both grabbing. I don't know what to do now.
As a senior at Stigler High School, I felt very privileged to attend the school. Me, I feel like I have many more in my place, and we just wanted to show this video to show our appreciation.
One of the things I like about Stigler High School is that you get to build a great relationship with all your friends and stuff that goes to Stigler, and then you get to play baseball, which is an awesome part of my life, because we got well, well-taught people there, and then we got a great kind of stickish.
A lot of things about this school that I love, but one of the biggest things is the atmosphere about Stigler schools. As you walk down the hall, all the teachers have a smile on their face and are always talking to you. It doesn't matter what day, what the weather's like, what's going on in the world. All the teachers are always really, really, really nice, and I also love the way the administration puts things into perspective, and it helps a lot of kids out in school. So that's what I love about Stigler High School.
Stigler High School is a faculty, they're always person to where, mat today, and I'll forever thank them for them.
My favorite thing about Stigler schools is being able to practically know everyone by their name around here. And larger schools, you probably don't get to know every single person, but around here, I get to know people by their name whenever someone mentions them. And I also enjoy being able to know all the teachers and get to talk to them on a personal level. In bigger schools, you probably won't be able to do that, but I really do enjoy the small town.
My favorite high school memory is being this born today this year, my senior year, and I'm glad for all the relationships and connections that I've had throughout Stigler and I'll forever cherish them.
Some things I've enjoyed about going to school at Stigler is that, you know, it's such a small town that we've all known each other our whole lives, and, you know, I've had the same friends growing up since I was, for as long as I can remember. And, you know, we played football together our whole lives, and that's something that I've grown such a good bond together with, and I'll have friendships that last a lifetime. And, you know, going here, you know, you always know everybody and play basketball together with each other and against each other. So, yeah, those are things I really enjoyed about going to school here.
My favorite thing about Stigler High School is the different groups of people and the variety of friends you can make, and just how everyone's so accepted here and that you can find your own people.
I think my favorite thing about Stigler High School is getting to come see all of my friends and getting to be with all these collective that they offer here.
My favorite memory from high school was all the fun play practices with party parties.
My favorite high school memory is probably the Lucas Grove Football Game. Whenever all the football team came out and watched the band perform our halftime show. There's still kids that talk about how, like, great that made them feel, and it made me feel good just because I know it made them really happy, and it seemed that everyone in the town enjoyed watching just that little moment between the football players and the band.
The reason I like Stigler High School is they gave me the opportunity to meet new friends.
My favorite thing about high school comes from band. I've made many new friendships. I've learned respect and discipline, and like, all around the best thing about high school.
One of my favorite things about the Stigler school experience, whether it was high school, middle school, or grade school, was the educational opportunity I was provided. So basically, I, I never felt hindered by my education or by the curriculum or by the teachers in general. I, I always felt like whatever I could do, I had the resources available to do it. I had amazing teachers who would always help me. I had great curriculum, and I feel like I learned way more than I would at maybe some other school. And I just, I love this school in particular.
My favorite Stigler high school, I'd say the football games.
Favorite high school memories so far in Stigler High School has got to be when we did the dating house play for the first time, and we got a standing ovation. We worked so hard for that play, and I'm just amazed and getting a standing ovation. And it was a lot more work than it paid off. And I loved Stigler so much, like, I had so many amazing friends, so many amazing mentors. The teachers were great. I have amazing grades and really good people.
The things I love about Stigler High School are how hands-on learning it is. I really like that the teachers really take the time to actually teach the students one-on-one. And if you ever need any help when it comes to math or reading or anything else, science, you can always go to that teacher even on their off-hours. I know especially, like, Ms. Henson is always involved with the seniors. You can always text her or call her, and that goes the same for all the rest of the teachers. And I really like how loving it is and how respectful the environment is. Mr. Morgan Preacher from day one, and Mr. Gilmore, like, always have respect for each other and always love each other. So those are the things that I love about Stigler High.
We are very blessed to have attended this school.
Thank you for this great experience.
Thank you.
I guess I should have made, that was seniors, seniors, and. And did a great job. Superintendent?
Twenty years, wasn't it? Awesome, thank you. Okay, this time we move on to action topics. A, consideration of renewing our contract with municipal accounting systems and incorporated MaaS for student personnel software for attendance and grades for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, and this is just our student information system and renewing our contract. Been with MaaS for several years and very used to it, user-friendly, so just continuation of that contract.
These are just the maintenance, these are basically the maintenance fees, I guess, they're the cheap.
Right, and they're, they're listed what we use it for.
The same as last year's close or?
You know, believe it or not, it's actually less. I don't know why, but it's a lesser bid.
Same resources in every day.
Last year was thirteen thousand, four hundred and six dollars, this year twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. Five or six hundred.
About the same services.
I have a question that we renew our contract with MaaS accounting systems for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to renew our contract with MaaS for our student personnel software for attendance and grades for the twenty twenty-one school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of allowing a bus to be parked overnight at the home of David Revis, route number thir, uh, number three driver for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, and, and Mr. Revis is substitute driver taking over for the remainder of the year for Jeff Upton. And Jeff was not a contract driver, he was just doing it on a timesheet also. So he's just in lieu of, in place of Jeff. And Jeff doing baseball the rest of the year and then having some ish, medical issues within the family there. So I'm sorry, Mr. Revis lives on that route. His first pickup would be, they said, less than a half a mile from that, from his house.
So quicker and cheaper.
Yes.
And where does he live?
He lives out by the dam, on the left, before you get to the dam.
Okay.
They moved big time then, didn't they?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we talked about that.
Because they live across the street from Sonic. Yeah. Motion on that, I guess?
Yes.
I mean, a motion, a, a motion we allow to park the school bus at David Revis's home for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll say it. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to allow David Revis, route number three driver, to park a bus at his house overnight for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of Cody Dawson, Stigler School FFA sponsor hosting the FFA Spring Regional Speech Contest on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and you have the documentation from him. It's the, in order to have this, it's kind of a by county meet. And the per, having it here. And then on the second page or you scroll down and he has kind of the, to whatever extent needed, the protocol for COVID and social distancing on the back through the second page there. And that's April the fourteenth.
We know how many schools are going to be involved?
Yes, he says it'll be schools in LaFlore and Haskell County, about fifty to seventy-five students, twenty to thirty judges, twenty to thirty-eight teachers. And then he shows how they'll be arriving and social distancing.
I make a motion, we approve Cody Dawson, Stigler School FFA sponsor hosting an FFA Spring Regional Speech Contest on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to allow Cody Dawson, Stigler School FFA sponsor, to host the FFA Spring Regional Speech Contest on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of revision of the following school policy, Board of Education meetings, teleconferencing and video conference regulations, dash B E dash R two.
Okay, I would assume it was one of the first bills passed when the new legislature came in. And this bill is to allow teleconferencing or video conferencing for meetings and that fits us. So this is basically the same policy as we had before that expired. And this will go until February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, or until thirty days after the expiration or termination of the state of emergency by the governor.
Make a motion, we make revisions to the teleconference, video conference regulations for the Board of Education meetings.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to allow school policy to change Board of Education meeting teleconferencing and video conference regulations, B E dash R two. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to executive session. A, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuit to twenty-five Oklahoma Statute Three of Seventeen, One of Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, effective end of twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Number two, discussion to employ a middle school secretary for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year. Number three, discussion to employ an elementary principal for the twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Discussion to employ a head football coach, classroom teacher for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second. Motion made by Jen, uh, Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to convene an executive session at seven thirty-seven P M. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Nine oh seven P M to return the board to open session. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Huggins, Brett Form, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White. Superintendent David Morgan was also present, no votes or motions were made. Motion.
I make a motion, we accept Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, her resignation effective the end of twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to accept the resignation of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, effective end of twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we employ Shauna Smith as middle school secretary effective March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Shauna Smith, middle school secretary for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one school year, effective March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we hire Kate Sherwood as football coach.
The elementary principal.
Oh, I forgot.
Next, that's okay.
Melanie Garman, elementary principal.
Okay.
Had my pager on.
You get tired too.
Yeah, I had my pager on.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to employ Melanie Garman for elementary principal for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we employ Kate Sher, Sherwood as the head football coach, classroom teacher for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Who, Brett?
Oh, yes.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to employ Kate Sherwood, head football coach, classroom teacher for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to new business. Do you need new business? Another business? Okay, motion for the adjournment.
I'm wishing we adjourned.
Okay.
I'll say that.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to adjourn at nine oh nine P M. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I meant to say, let's stay here for another hour.